Welcome all of you to the March meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. The first item of business is to review and approve the minutes. Do we have minutes on that? Okay. Second is to review and sign the bills. These the bills?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. God bless. The telegram is up.
I move that we authorize the expenditures as read by the chairman.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any board member comments?
I think we need to vote on that.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
All right. If there's anyone here for the, what is it, 9:35 Main Street, that's been continued. So it's not going to be heard tonight.
Should we set the hearing date?
Let's wait till we get there on the...
Let's wait till we get there. All right. First item of business is 75 to 77 Elm Street and 32 Carolina Ave. Site plan approval for one duplex. This is a continued public hearing. Its location is 75 to 77 Elm Street and 32 Caroline Ave. We have a decision deadline of 90 days from the closing of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates. I'm also here with Mr. Corvo, who is the proponent for this project. Just to give everybody a quick update, this is an existing 23,000 square foot lot that fronts...
John? They can't see him.
Oh, I'm sorry, can't see. Is that a little better?
Better.
All right. This is an existing single-family house lot that fronts on Elm Street to the east, Caroline Ave. to the north, and Willard Ave. to the south. Currently, as I said, there's an existing single-family house on the central north portion of the property with an existing garage and a driveway that splits down the middle of the lot, and then there is also an additional parking area on the northerly property line on Caroline Ave. What is proposed is a duplex that will front along Elm Street. There'll be one unit on the northerly portion of property, one unit on the southerly portion. They'll each have their own individual driveway. What was requested at the last hearing was that we provide a way so that cars wouldn't be backing out onto Elm Street. So what we've done is incorporated the turnaround on either unit, so if a car's parked in front of the garage, they have the ability to back into a turnaround and then head straight, straight out onto Elm Street, so they're not backing out onto Elm Street. The last item that was requested was the addition of a landscape plan. And what we are proposing, on the westerly portion, there is an existing hedge row that buffers the properties on, that are two, well, ones on Willard, ones on Caroline. There's an existing hedge row. We are proposing a row of hemlocks along Caroline Ave. for screening for the backyard for this unit, and also hemlocks along the southerly border, along Willard Street. We're also proposing some, a white pine. On this corner, there's an existing tree that's located on the northerly corner of Caroline Ave. and Elm Street. And then we also have a dozen or so mix of hydrangea, perennial flowers, arborvitae, some rhododendrons, some ornamental grasses, and some yews that will be located adjacent to the front doors along the corners of both buildings. So we have a plant list associated with that and a landscape plan that we added, and that was requested at the last hearing. I think that was, that wraps up the items that were requested from the board at the last hearing. If anybody has any additional questions or comments we'd like to address.
Steve, would I?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jay?
No, sir. My other questions are about the landscape, but John covered its own good.
Okay. Steve?
All set.
Okay. I'm all set. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to be heard? Yes, sir? Please stand and identify yourself.
Vincent Ambrosino, 2 Beverly Road. Can I step forward?
Yeah, look.
I'm not sure if last meeting, if it was discussed, but there's a fence that goes along Willard and there's a half of, on Elm, is that coming down or is it staying up? And if it's coming down, is it going to be replaced with something or...
It's coming down. And we can leave it up, but it's in poor condition, so I would...
It is, and that's my concern, it's in pork, it's multicolored, it's green.
We were going to take it down.
You're going to take it down?
No.
The boss has spoken.
I don't think it looks very nice. It will not.
Okay.
Okay, sir?
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Okay, is there anyone upstairs here? Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on the application for site plan approval, 69-73 Harrington Avenue, for the Harrington Avenue Realty Trust applicant.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No.
We should deliberate.
We just voted.
No, we closed the hearing.
Oh, we closed the hearing.
All right. I move that...
We vote?
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision of the planning board regarding application for site plan approval, 69-73 Harrington Avenue, the applicant being the Harrington Avenue Realty Trust.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Anything, are we all set?
All set. Let me just go to my board and whoever's on board.
Fill your houses. Okay?
Could you take one and pass it around? This is the updated plans for the rest.
Did I say Harrington Avenue?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I said Harrington Avenue.
Did you?
On decision. I'm going to reopen that.
I think you can just amend it.
I made a scrivener's, although it's not really, I made a verbal error, and for some reason I put it in...
Just make the motion again for...
Yeah. I move that we reconsider my...
Just, you don't have to do that. Just make a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled "Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Approval, 75-77 Elm Street and 32 Caroline Ave., Corvo Development LLC."
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Sorry about that.
Do we have another vote? Or is that it?
That was it.
I couldn't figure out how to rush that thing, huh? The pages are upside down.
Okay. Wood Street. This is a continued public hearing. Location is 69 to 73 Harrington Avenue. Decision deadline is April 27, 2018. I'd also like to open 69 to 73 Harrington Avenue, site plan approval for two duplexes. This is a continued public hearing. Location is 69 to 73 Harrington Avenue. Decision deadline is 90 days from the closing of the hearing. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates. Just to give everybody an update or an overview as to where we ended up with the subdivision and the site plan approval. This is an existing lot that fronts both on Harrington Avenue and existing Wood Street. Originally, we submitted for just site plan approval for the two duplexes. We were asked to submit a subdivision because we didn't have adequate frontage for the second lot on Wood Street, and Wood Street would need to be improved in order to count that frontage along Wood Street as official frontage. So we started off with the site plan approval. We subsequently submitted a subdivision to improve Wood Street so that we could count that frontage for what's shown as Lot 2 on our site plan. So with that, we've had a meeting with the county engineer. We had a meeting with the DPW, and it was suggested that we bring the section of Wood Street, which is about 226 feet, to improvement, road improvement standards, which would require 22 feet of pavement and curving, which is what is shown on this plan. We also did drainage calculations. We did some test pits on-site, and there were good soils on-site. So we were, to accommodate the increased impervious area from both the duplexes and the increased pavement on Wood Street, we are proposing dry wells, one in the central portion of the lot, one on the westerly portion of the lot. After that, we had another conversation with both the engineering department and then subsequently with Graves Engineering, and it was suggested that we install catch basins along with the curbs, and then those are hard piped, the catch basins, which is just capturing the runoff from Wood Street, those are hard piped to the infiltration chambers that are located both in the central and the westerly portion of the lot. There were some questions from the Butters, in particular, Mr. Montanari, who fronts both on the corner of Harrington Ave. and on Wood Street. They have control of both of these properties. And Eamon met them on-site. Eamon's one of the partners associated with this project to see what they could do to accommodate. Everybody has now, these units are going to be sharing Wood Street with Mr. Montanari. A couple of the suggestions, there's existing boulders down at the end of the road. Mr. Montanari was looking to get removed. They agreed to remove those. There were also a couple of trees...
Yes.
That he was looking to have removed.
Yes.
They agreed, my client agreed, to remove those trees. And also, Mr. Montanari was requesting additional width of the pavement, I believe, an additional six feet. We're proposing, right now, Wood Street's 18 feet. We are proposing 22 feet based on improvement standards. Mr. Montanari was looking for an additional six feet beyond that to bring it up to 28 feet wide, and I believe that was because he has a truck and to back out from his driveway might be a little bit tight and awkward for him. I talked to Bernie and just let him know that that was a request from one of the neighbors. Obviously, it's up to the board how wide the road will be. That's a planning board decision. That's not our decision. But what we are proposing is the 22 feet. If it's the board's wish that we go wider than that, again, we'll go with whatever the board suggests. There were some questions from our last revision that were, Graves Engineering gave us some comments yesterday afternoon. I had a phone call with Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering, and the conclusion to that, I have a letter that is a response letter, and we made a few minor alterations. At the catch basins, we had to change the style of curbing to have a granite, a vertical granite in front of the catch basins, and then that has a little flare, so it ties into the Cape Cod burn, so it transitions better. So we have one in front of both catch basins. It was also suggested that during construction, we install silt sacks in those catch basins, which we added a detail for silt sacks, so that during construction, we can capture out any of the silt that would be running off into those catch basins. He also suggested that, and this is what I had a conversation with him, is that because we have such good soils and we are capturing water in the catch basins, that we should provide additional treatment of that water instead of, I mean, not that Wood Street's really going to be heavily traveled, it's going to act as just a, really a common access for the lots, but for the long, the longevity of the dry wells, because they'll get water directly from the catch basins, we should provide additional treatment. So we're proposing proprietary storm-seperated units, which is a bore technique type of unit that will provide additional treatment beyond just having something in the catch basins. So we added that detail as well to the drawings. And we also, and Bernie brought this up, we were showing a temporary entrance pad in our erosion control drawing. Originally, Bernie brought this up, that we had it shown over here. We relocated that so that the construction entrance would be coming in off of, in the location of about the second driveway off of Wood Street, so that we're not trapping any runoff onto Wood Street, and also that we're not using Harrington Ave., which is obviously more heavily traveled, as a construction entrance back and forth onto the site during construction. So we also added that. Was there anything else?
Landscape design.
Yeah, we did provide landscaping with a landscape legend for the addition of trees, and we pulled the trees further off of Wood Street so that we could not have issues with snow storage areas, and obviously the DPW didn't want us to have the trees within the right of way. So we pushed the proposed, their pin oaks, I believe, pushed those further back off of the Wood Street right of way and out of the way for any snow storage areas. We are proposing a snow storage area at the central, along the common lot line between the two duplexes in this area. And we also have additional trees between the two units and then on either end. So we added that as well onto the plans. I think that covers the main items from Graves. And with these changes, I asked Jeff Walsh, he wasn't going to be able to, he wasn't in the office today, I don't think he's back until tomorrow, but I asked his permission to say that I did have a conversation with him. We're in agreement with the improvements that we made for the drainage and the catch basins, and I believe that we're on the same page with Graves Engineering. So I asked him if I could state that to the board, and he said he didn't have a problem, and he will confirm that with Bernie tomorrow as well. I think that's the long and the short of it. If there's any additional questions or comments we'd like to address.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add two quick things? One was that Graves mentioned a site line easement may be requested from the planning board along Harrington Avenue. That's something for the board to consider this evening or whenever it closes the hearing and deliberates. The other thing was, yeah, there's a note about one of the dry wells perhaps being not deep enough, and what I did is I added it in the draft decision as a condition that our engineering will go out and make sure that it's...
Deep enough.
...deep enough at the time of construction. So that's a condition that was added, and I spoke to our new senior civil engineer, who I hope to have here next time when he views himself, and he concurred that that would be acceptable. So just to cover all the Graves engineering bases and what he mentioned. But I can concur that everything that John said is, at least from my end, how it happened with highway engineering and planning department meeting and requesting the, some kind of curving and a drainage system, which has now been put in. And to my satisfaction, all of Graves and the drainage issues, I think, have been addressed at this point, but that leaves, of course, a couple other questions open to you, the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest two things. I'd like to suggest that Wood Street be 24 feet instead of 22. And what was my other thing? Bernie, when I met with you yesterday?
You had mentioned you're concerned about the Cape Cod burn.
Oh, that's right. Yes. We outlawed Cape Cod burn three to four years ago because it only lasts about one winter, maybe two. So I'd rather see that be sloped granite.
Well, I don't think we outlawed it, but...
In my mind.
In your mind.
We officially frowned on it.
So, sorry, Mr. Chairman, you said you prefer sloped...
Sloped granite.
I think with the truck turnaround...
Yeah.
It's a better option.
I think with Mr. Montanari's truck going over it. Granite would be better. Is that okay?
Yes. I like that.
Steve?
Well, we should probably... This should probably wait for the deliberation part of it, but it's still a public hearing right now, so I think it's appropriate to speak back and forth with the applicant and to hear the public, but these deliberations should probably wait. No, that's all right.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Mr. Montanari?
Mr. Chairman, Montanari, 6 Wood Street. I did, when I left the last meeting, I had the two gentlemen, I talked to them, I said, please call me so we could sit down and talk. Just Friday, I got an email from one of them saying what he was going to do on the road. So to me, that's not communicating. So I had this family come down on Saturday. We went over everything. Since then, I did get ahold of my lawyer because I didn't know what was going on. And we're still trying to reach an agreement.
I always got things to do, but we're talking about things, but I don't know if I have enough for everybody. I'll try to get a copy. Bernie, you're left out.
No. Give it to him and I'll sue him now.
On the road width, I know I was asking for 28 feet, but I think I got a letter here from that John, John Knight, would like to see it 26 feet. And I got a couple pictures just to kind of give you an idea why the road width is my concern, it's not my truck. It's because of snow, and we're not going to have enough room for emergency vehicles. So this is a five-inch, a four-inch storm. That's the end of my driveway, right where my driveway is, which will be right across from one of the duplexes driveways. That's the only reason I'm concerned about the width of the road, but it seems like it just doesn't...
28 feet, I thought you wanted to land the airplane.
You looking for 26 feet?
Well, I got a big truck. But John Knight, I mean, he says 26, I'd be happy with 26.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with 26?
I would note that John Knight wrote 26, one, he believed it was a throughway street, and also that it was going to be accepted as a public street, just for accuracy.
Okay.
But then, didn't, I have a note here, I wrote 22, I scribbled in.
That's what it is now.
That's what it proposes to be handled.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's the minimum requirement for a non-throughway street in a subdivision.
By going to the 26, would that infringe on any other front or side setbacks?
It's a small road.
Yeah, it's just a two-house road.
It's a little bigger than that now when they have the...
Is there anyone in the audience wishes to be heard on this?
My name's John Sherplee, and they're keeping that drain at the same location as they did before. Why don't they move it down and catch all the water that goes down there? I mean, why can't they move it to the lower spot and then have it all drain in? So you don't have all, you're going to end up with all ice and everything else around here because it's going to puddle up, and in the ice and snow, it's going to freeze because they're not going to the lowest point on the drain.
All right, Bernie.
And by the way, Wood Street is a private street.
I understand that.
I believe that the owners have, the owners of a private street have some rights on the street themselves. So the left-hand side has rights to the center of the road, and the right-hand side has rights to the center of the road. When you're talking about Wood Street, is you can't, the town cannot stop them from parking two cars, parking cars on each side of the street because it's a private road. So you can't say, okay, you can only park on the right-hand side. So there's so many, there's going to be so many cars in a short area, you've got two-car garage, two-car garage, two-car garage, two-car garage, and you're going to have people over, there's going to be a lot of parking on the street, both sides of the road, and you're trying to tell me that they're going to be parked, you need nine feet from each car on each side because you're going to stay a foot off the curb. You're going to tell me a fire truck is going to be able to get through there with two sides of the road being blocked all the time with all this traffic? There's a lot of traffic for a short street, number one. And number two, why don't we straighten out the drain once it's all over there? The flow, if you go tomorrow after it rains, a Sunday morning, and see how much water has been dumped into here, and they're not going to be able to stop that flow because all the water goes down onto the property now, and they're going to build it all up to street level, and it's all going to run down this way and shoot down here.
Okay. Miss?
Devin King, 24 Everett Avenue, what he was just referring to here. This is us, and so our concern is that the building up the street, you're going to have that incline towards our property going this way. We already have drainage going this way, and we understand you're putting in the dry wells. Just want to make sure that we're protected as well and that during the winter, when those might freeze over or when the snow starts to melt, you know, just, I just want to have it on record that we're a little concerned that all of this is going to start draining down because we don't have that land anymore to soak up the water. It's all going to be pavement and house. So if those aren't, if that's not enough, we're going to end up flooded.
Yeah, and half of the road is gravel now. That's actually drainage.
Hey, you're done.
So that's, that's our only concern, and we just want confirmation that you've considered all those things with the dry wells and that we're not going to have to worry about doing something because more is going to end up on our land. That's all.
Understood. And just to, in addition to the dry wells, we're also capturing the roof runoff, and we're installing recharge chambers, so we're going to capture the roof runoff and then any of the overland flow. These are the low spots, and we're creating, and there's a 410 elevation, no, 408 elevation that runs here.
Right.
And now we have this on 407. So this is a low spot, and this is a low spot. So everything's going to valley down to these low spots with these dry wells, which is going to capture the pavement, and then these recharge chambers will be capturing the roof runoff. So we feel comfortable that we sized appropriately.
And that's all, we just wanted to verify.
Thank you. Mr. Sherplee, do you want to speak now?
I'm just saying that, why can't they move this, this drain drain down here where all the water is that's, that's coming down here? If you capture it back here, you're going to get rid of this water problem, that's all going to flow this way and then that way.
Okay.
You're not going to know, just because it's not at the low point. If you go down here and look at the road, you'll be able to see that the angle, if you stand right here, right about here, that's the high point of the road, right here, everything is going this way, right till it gets to about, I'd say, right around in here. If they can't, why can't they move it down four feet? If they can't, why can't they move it down four feet? Five feet?
The low, the low spot, we had it surveyed by Jarvis Land Survey. The contour at the end of the street, at the low point of the street is 412. This is a 410 elevation that runs in the area where he's speaking, then it goes down to 408 down here, and then in this area, we're bringing it down to about 407. So this is the actual low point down in here. With, with the survey, the topographic land survey that was provided by Jarvis Land Survey. So we're putting the, the drywells and the, all of the drainage in that low spot, and that's in the location where we're proposing the drywells.
John, you're, you're a higher elevation, right? You're gonna be high and dry.
Who, me?
Yeah, it's not gonna affect you.
No, actually, I don't know what he's talking about. If you stand on this road, and you look down where the fence is, that's the lowest, then Mr. Montanari can explain that. Where's the lowest point on the road? Right about where the fence is, right?
Right up the rocks.
Right up to the rocks.
Yep. Of the road.
Well, he's, he's blocking the road off before his driveway. He's not talking about the road up to the fence. But the road actually goes through the fence and another 75 feet, so the road ends up over here. But what they're doing is they're saying they're blocking it off their low point of the road, but if you go another five feet, the road is a lot lower.
Okay. Well, and just as a point of clarification, if you look at the, look at the grading plan. Oh, I'm sorry, look at the utility plan.
You don't have an existing conditions plan?
There is.
Yes.
It's at H2.
Page two.
Page two. If you look at the, there's a sewer man hole in front of Mr. Sherplee's property, existing sewer man hole, it's at the very end of the, the right-of-way of Wood Street. The rim on that is elevation 411. The elevation that we're proposing our drywells is down at elevation 407.
Steve feels that?
So there may be an isolated pocket over there somewhere, but for all of this site, the lowest spot is, is where we're showing the drywells.
So, excuse me, can I get, so what you're saying is you're gonna bring the, you're gonna bring the road just before Montanari's driveway?
Correct.
You're ending it right here.
Correct.
If you, if you end it right there, everything is gonna dip down.
We have a curb and a catch basin.
Yeah, right here.
Correct.
But the water flow is still gonna go by, it's not gonna catch it all. The water is gonna go by, what you don't wanna do is, you don't wanna correct the problem back here, you want it in your road here. This road goes all the way up to here. You don't wanna create, correct the flow, water flow problem, which is coming from here down to here. That's what you're saying?
No.
All right. That's all I'm saying here.
So, just so that I'm clear, I understand where you're coming from, but I just, I wanna see if I missed some clarification.
We're, we're installing...
Where the, where the curve is gonna end, where the catch basin is. Water's gonna flow, it's gonna hit that.
Hit the curve, go into the catch basin, and then go through...
Any fluid beyond the curve that's coming down naturally is gonna do its natural flow.
Correct.
This way.
Yes.
What's the, wait, so...
How high is the curve, John?
It's, it's gonna be a six-inch curve.
All right, so unless we have greater than six inches of water flowing down the street at one time, things should go into the catch basin.
Correct.
So there's gonna be a curb at the end of...
So we can capture that. The water that's coming down the shoulder of, of each shoulder of the road, we're gonna be, you'll have a crown of the road.
Yeah.
The, the water goes down along, runs along the curb line.
Yeah.
From the crown of the road, it'll go down the curb line, and then hit, anything that's flowing down, anything that's flowing down Wood Street will hit the first catch basin, anything, and that will hard pipe into our drywells. Anything on the westerly portion of Wood Street will flow down the curb line and hit the second catch basin, which is, which is right at where we're curving it, at the, the end of, of Wood Street.
So essentially, there's gonna be like a speed bump at the end of Wood Street?
No, that's gonna be, well, that's the end of the road. That's the end of the pavement at, of Wood Street.
So what's the point of termination gonna look like? Do we have a detail on that?
We're gonna have a curb, we're gonna have a curb there.
A curb, so you're gonna have a...
A curb going down the shoulder, and then at the end of, at the end of Wood Street.
How does that, he's got rights to pass and repass. How does that affect...
You're not going across Wood Street, right?
Yeah, he is.
Oh, we're gonna, well, it's not that you can't pass and repass, it's gonna be a, a, well, we're gonna have a Cape Cod burn, which is this high.
And work like that.
So what, what I'm, what I'm really trying to say is, if you take Mr. Montanari's driveway, and they drop it just before his driveway, all the water from this house, all the water down this driveway, and all the water this way will be flowing down into here, just past that, that drain.
It'll go where it goes now.
Yeah, it'll go where it goes now. So the water problem's gonna exist where it is now. It's gonna always stay the same. So this house here, and I'm trying to stick up for this, these people too, this house here is gonna see no limitation of water at all, because everything is gonna stay the same. If they move the drain down to where, right about here, right about where the fence is, you'd eliminate the problems that are going this way, you'd eliminate the problems that come out of the driveway, you'd eliminate all the problems there.
This is kind of a bizarre point of termination of the road. I'm just, I'm concerned about affecting Mr. Skirp, I, I don't wanna do anything that interferes with Mr. Sherplee's rights to pass and repass if he has, has in fact rights in that road. How's he gonna, how's he gonna cross it if he wants to?
What's he wanna cross it with?
A vehicle.
Well, he can, he can drive up and down there if he, if he wants us to remove the curb at the, at the termination end, we'll remove the curb. We're just trying to capture the water so that it goes into the catch basin.
Yes, but again, but that, I don't wanna get in a situation where the town is blessing something that potentially interferes with someone's right to pass and repass over a way that they have rights in.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll remove the curb at the very end of the road if you want. We're just trying to make sure that we're capturing the water.
Maybe, like I said, maybe a speed bump or something would be better?
Yeah, we can just give a, we can just put a, at the end of the road, just so that the water will hit that and go into the catch basin and the speed bump, whatever, that's fine. I mean, a, a...
Graves Engineering has reviewed the stormwater. I assume that when they're looking at these lots, they're looking at the lots in their entirety, such that they've reviewed the stormwater, and they've made a determination that the runoff is not gonna get any worse.
Correct.
Even include, and I assume their analysis included the, that little stub unimproved, not to be improved, portion of Wood Street where it intersects Everett Ave, 'cause that's part, that's one of your lots.
Well, that's not, that doesn't go out to Everett Ave, but it's on that side, yes.
Yes, but...
Yes, no, they looked at the entire, we, we looked at the entire drainage area, everything that flows there now, plus what the increase in runoff is gonna be from the widening of the road, plus the units, and where it goes now, and to address that, we're installing drywells, and we're capturing that water in the low spots.
Okay.
In the lowest point.
In the lowest point. And the lowest point is on this lot.
Right. See, I, like John said, I'm more concerned about the Kings and the Campbells, 'cause I think that...
Right.
'Cause that would affect, just because of the elevations, that would affect them more.
And what we've, what we've designed and proposed was reviewed by Graves Engineering in their concurrence.
Okay, that, so when they review the subdivision, they review, they review the two lots in their entirety, such that, not just where the, your road terminates?
No, they looked at the two lots, the, the entire increase in impervious area with the road.
No, you don't wanna say the entire frontage, the entire frontage of your lot, not the entire frontage of the road you're improving, correct?
Frontage of, of my lot, yes.
Yeah, the increase in impervious area that we're creating, plus the increase in impervious area with driveways and, and homes, and what's the increase in impervious area from all that? Where's it going? How we're capturing it and reducing it from existing condition?
Steve?
Uh, okay, I reserve the right to make a few...
Mr. Sherplee?
What this, what this, what he just said is, their lot, this lot here, this lot ends right here, right there. That is probably about sixty, seventy feet from the dead end of their road. So their property comes another seventy feet up to here, because they're saying that they only have to go so much on the second lot, because you can stop it earlier. I don't know what that means. But they don't land all the way over to here, so they, they never took and evaluated from this point to this point. They stopped right there, so this whole piece has never been really evaluated.
I asked them, he said they did.
We did.
Can't, because that's where all the water is. I don't know what else to say.
So Graves' review is to verify, so a stormwater report was submitted for the subdivision. Graves Engineering did look at it, it looked at this system that was provided. The bylaws and the stormwater is there to make sure that off-site runoff from those lots does not increase from existing conditions. It has to be the same or less. And Graves Engineering looked at this plan, reviewed this plan, you've seen its comments, and at no point did he say this increases runoff off the site. The one thing they had was that the drywell, one of them might need to be a foot or two lower to make sure it captures everything. I will say that, but it does take into account everything that flows onto the site, and then what flows onto the site, whether from rain or elsewhere, as it flows off the site is reduced or kept the same. I don't see how it's necessarily the applicant's responsibility for what comes onto their site. And while they have the rights to improve the entire Wood Street, as do everyone who abuts Wood Street, they are not obligated to improve all of the street. They can improve as much as they need to, or as little as they need to, just as everyone else can on this street. I think that's an important point.
That they don't have the right to impair Mr. Skirplee's access?
Yes, if he were to tear down the fence...
He would have built a berm in the middle of...
Correct.
Wood Street, that would potentially impair his rights to...
Yeah, I'll have to actually, it was reviewed with John Knight, the Highway Superintendent, and Jeff Howland, these berms, so I don't know, must've been oversight.
Oh, I'm sure it would work better, but it just would impair his access.
No, I know exactly what you're saying. Um, just, yeah, that's why I asked if there was one going across Wood Street, I didn't realize there was one going across Wood Street.
I, I think the confusion comes from there, the fact that there's a, you pull down the street, and there's these massive boulders, eight feet in diameter, a bunch of those, and then a few small trees, and then Mr. Sherplee's fence, so...
It's right in the middle of the street now?
Yeah, right at the end of...
I forget, I looked at it in 2003, I forget.
So I think Mr. Sherplee may be concerned that in the future, if he wanted to do improvements to the road, so he could pass through there, he just doesn't want a curb in his way.
Who put the boulders up?
I'm not sure. Looked like they've been there for a while.
I don't know.
Mr. Sherplee, who put the boulders up?
I would think that's from the construction of the homes that were on the street.
Okay. I did not do it.
Are they on your property?
And that's, they're on, they're on, they were at the end of the...
Are they in the Wood Street?
Well, see, that was, Wood Street was never developed, then Mr. Montanari put a driveway in, and the boulders were there, and so I never wanted to go through onto his driveway.
When did Mr., when, when did the boulders go in?
The boulders been here for years.
How many years?
Twenty years.
That might be the magic number for, he may have terminated your...
No, he didn't, it's, it's eighteen on, on... I still got two years. All right, so I know that. But I just, and, and I didn't wanna intrude on it, because he put a nice driveway in, and I didn't wanna intrude on that, but now that they're building a road, and they're gonna have all this stuff going on here, and plus, the town, the town may be paved all of Everett Ave up to my, where, where I entrance did, and I, when I did it, I spent all that money thinking that the town extended the, the blacktop to the end of Everett Ave, which is the dirt road. So now, in front of this fellow's house, it's all dug up, because the town, I asked the town, I says, "Why didn't you repave the road?" They says, "Well, it's a private road." Well, why did the town engineer have me pave the whole road, thinking they were, they were moving it up? So now it's all, it's gonna turn all back to dirt, I might as well go out on this other road, because the town doesn't wanna fix the old road. You know, and it's, and I paved it all. So...
I don't know, you see, you probably would've been better off paving that section of Wood Street in that side, but I don't know.
Well, at the time, Mr. Montanari wasn't there.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? But that, what I'm actually trying to say is, the lowest point of the road is, is about right at where the fence is.
Sir, respectfully, we can remove the curbing, but there's boulders, trees, little bit of wooded area, and then the fence.
I forgot.
Forget it.
And you already said that you were gonna remove the boulders and the trees. We said that earlier, right?
Um, there's a couple boulders that are in the way of snow storage for Mr. Montanari's driveway, so I agreed that I would remove a few of those boulders, or a couple of those boulders, to create more snow storage area.
Right. So if we hadn't created some sort of soft berm there that was drive-overable to... Well, that's what, that's what we are, that's what we're proposing, so... So you're not proposing putting a granite curb across there? Well, we were gonna put a Cape Cod burn, which is four inches high and out of forty, whatever, thirty-degree angle. And then Mel was saying, well, if we just, a slow granite curbing, which is the same, it's, it's probably about like that. Right.
Probably should be like a speed bump or something.
Yeah, if, if you made a, a slow, just something to, like a sway of that.
In the event that, in the event that the boulders and the trees were moved, and, and, you know, nineteen years and 364 days, I mean, come up, and Mr. Skirplee's gonna clear it and pave it and decide to use it.
Fair enough.
Well, you know, like I said, the boulders came from Mr. Montanari's house, and the ones on my side of the fence, just two of them came from my house. So they pushed them around the corner. But that's how it was then, but, and I never wanted to go through, because I didn't wanna, he put a nice driveway in, I had a right to go up there, it was all blacktop. Now that they're building the road, I'd like to have Wood Street, I have to go up Wood Street like I'm supposed to. Especially, I already had some calls at the house, the fire department, well, the ambulance, the fire department knows now, but the ambulance came down Wood Street, and they couldn't get there.
Okay, but you have the, just like this gentleman, the applicant, you have the right to improve it too.
For me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if, if, if they go up to the fence, I'll improve the other side.
Why aren't they going up to the fence? He's going up to the fence, just about.
No, they're not.
How far away?
They're going quite, they're going, that's what I'm saying, all this stuff here, excuse me, all this stuff, the fence is, the fence is right here.
Will you go to the fence?
And they're stopping it in front of the driveway, so what I'm saying, everything from here...
I'll chip in. Will you go to that fence?
Where's my wallet?
Everything from the driveway, everything from over here is gonna continue to be as it was before, if not worse.
Okay, Mr. Sherplee, thank you.
So if they go up to the fence, I'll improve the other side.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Montanari?
All right, so now, so now Mr. Sherplee's talking about going up Wood Street, so now we're only at 22 feet.
What's that?
So now we're at 22 feet, they're planning on 22 feet, so I got two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen cars going up Wood Street, at 22 feet.
Parking on both sides.
No, but 26 feet is the usual side of the right-of-way, and...
We're talking 22, right, you're up to 26.
No, I'm just saying 26 is the usual size.
I suggested 26. And I think we'll have that as a...
Now, if he comes, if he goes through Wood Street, where is snow storage, other than, and I've been plowing it for 14 years, so I know about the snow on Wood Street. Usually, we come to the rocks.
26.
I think it would have to be done, just like any other street, we just push it off to either side, clear your driveways, and that's it, and it's on the sides of the road, just like any other road.
I wish it was that easy though. Because I push it on the side and when we get storms, I gotta push it in my front, yeah.
Right. No, I understand.
We also created some snow storage areas on the lawns of.
Right.
I totally understand that. But that's almost like what I have already. Pushing it all on the sides, I knocked that fence down three times already.
Yes.
When the piece over there. So maybe somewhere down here, we can figure, you know, because if we're gonna, if he's going to come through, with that catch basin, that ain't going to do any good there. You're going to have to move the catch basin. Correct?
Yeah.
Right?
Mr. Montanari.
Want me to go sit down?
We're devoting as much time to this.
I know, but I, but I think this is where we need to sit down and sit down with these, you know, with everybody so we can figure all this out.
This private, this, this private, we're trying to, unfortunately, because this is a private way, we're also trying to resolve private disputes that are running apparently.
That we shouldn't be involved in.
But if you went to the fence, if you went to the fence, would that make everybody happy? And if it was a twenty-six-foot right-of-way?
I think going to the fence ruins a very good snow storage area because now a block can come straight down and plow into that. If, if Mr. Shkrepley wants to improve the road, remove the boulders, remove the fence, remove the trees, figure out some drainage and add to the road, then yes.
If you do it all at once, it would make a lot of sense. You'd probably save a lot of money, John, when you wanted to improve it.
No, wait, wait a minute. Alls I'm saying is if they go to the fence, if they go to the fence, it gets rid of all the water puddling up there. There's going to be a pond there. If they go to the fence with the road and put the drainage by the fence, it's all set. That's all I'm saying.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard?
We have enough.
Well, is there anyone on the board wishes to be heard?
So, John, so if, if.
John who?
John Green, yeah. If you went, if you, if you extend it to the fence, that is another twenty feet?
Fifteen or so.
Something like that, you know.
Yeah, approximately.
And then, and then if, if the boards decided that you needed vertical granite instead of.
Slope granite.
Slope granite, slope granite, slope granite, thank you, thank you, yeah, yeah. Slope granite and you put in a, in a speed bump, how would that affect your stormwater calculations, yeah?
We.
You know, which is, to answer, I'm hoping to hear.
We looked at, we looked at this.
Yeah.
Worst case, we'd have to add a little bit more stone around the dry wells. We wouldn't have to start adding more.
Let me ask you something, because your, your client is, every time he's come here, he's spent.
I know.
Lots of money. Now, I'm just speaking for me, I know the chairman said that he likes slope granite. But this is going to be a private way.
Okay.
Now, if, if we went Cape Cod berm, you'd save a lot, you'd, you'd be saving a lot more money and you could bring the road up to the fence.
It's a fair trade-off.
I could do that.
Does that seem to make sense to everybody? You'd be saving more money, actually.
Yes.
That seems reasonable.
It's, and it's a private road, so.
Mr. Montanari, are you okay going up to the fence, the road? Twenty-six feet wide?
Twenty-six feet wide.
Twenty-six feet wide.
That's a wide road.
It's a wide road, John.
I'm trying to keep the peace, that's, keep everybody happy, but that's a very, Nelson Point is eighteen feet.
It's a wide road for a small road.
Yeah, but it's serving a lot of houses.
Nelson Point is eighteen feet wide. I'm okay twenty-two or twenty-four, whatever the board says, but now it's, it's a free-for-all, it's a quick gravel. What's, what's the builder going to throw in?
Well, I know, it always is.
And to his point, just for a point of reference, if you look at Nelson Point, which services many more, how, that's got, how many units, it's got to be thirty, that's eighteen feet wide. So just as a point of reference.
So are we now back to twenty-four feet?
I think you need to deliberate amongst yourselves once you close the public hearing.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get this.
No, I understand, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Yes.
Can we figure out who's taking care of this road?
I think he accepted, he said he was going to do it. He accepted the man, it's the co-trust. I don't know how we enforce that, but.
And I have one question, just to ask. Are they going to have association dues for those units?
Yes.
And is, are they going to put so much money, the roads last about fifteen years. So what's going to happen after fifteen years with all those cars going on here?
I'm going to be dead.
Yeah.
Have it in there to repave the road.
This is still America, it's not, so you, you, you know.
If we're looking at the road, the standpoint of the road, we're only going to go in by another eight feet?
Yeah.
I took care of the eighteen feet. Really, it's really not much to ask, so everybody's happy there.
I think if it makes Mr. Montanari and his family happy, I'm okay with the twenty-six feet, but I just, I'm saying it's overkill and I'm only doing it.
Twenty-fourth feet, we said now. No, twenty-six.
I'll do the twenty-six, but I'm really trying to.
You're going to save it on the vertical granite.
I'm, I'm doing it to keep everybody happy and not because it's really necessary.
You're going to save it on the Cape Cod?
Yes. I understand the abutters have rights and I want, and I want to keep them happy.
Go to the fence.
I've gone out of my way to try to keep everybody.
I'm hoping we close the public hearing on the subdivision aspect of it.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Close the site plan then as well?
Well, the site plan is open too.
Yeah, we open both.
We do it.
We open both.
We open both.
I'm hoping if we close the public hearing on the site plan approval for the Harrington Ave and Wood Street duplexes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Was it deliberated at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going, we're going to reserve our deliberations till the end of the meeting. Watch it, be surprised or not surprised.
Mrs. DeValco?
Mr. Chairman, please get everyone out of the room. Gavlo.
Yep.
Few people will please move out.
Mr. Shkrepley, am I?
I wasn't there.
Gavlo.
Thank you guys.
Mrs. DeValco, are you here for nine thirty-five Main Street?
The hearing's being continued.
We know that.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Who?
Me.
Oh.
It's Richard Duhamel. Oh, wait, sorry, actually, it's the Wyman Farm ones, if you would now request that, we do have the letters in hand, so if you want to.
All right, let's do the Wyman Farm.
I'm going to refuse myself because my partner, Mr. Broder, is a, a barer.
Going to take about twenty seconds. It's the April fifth meeting. So there can be a motion to continue to April fifth.
Do I have a motion to continue?
For nine thirty-five Main Street?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we continue the public hearing for Wyman Farms, nine thirty-five Main Street. Site plan modification.
Second, April fifth.
To April fifth, 2018 at seven P.M.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now it's eleven Wesleyan.
Let me tidy up a little bit here.
I'm going to.
All right. Got a legal notice here from the Shrewsbury Planting Board. The Shrewsbury Planning Board, withhold public hearing on Thursday evening, March first, 2018, at seven P.M. In the old selectmen's meeting room at the Richard DeConne Municipal Office Building, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. To hear the application of Fiber Homes, Inc., for Stony Brook Road, North Grafton, Mass. For, let's see, for site plan approval by the Planning Board, allow for construction of a duplex and associated improvements. A site plan approval is required by the town of Shrewsbury, according by law, section seven F three. The proposed development is shown in the plans entitled Plan of Land in Shrewsbury, Mass., eleven Wesleyan Street duplex project, in February sixth, 2018, prepared by Mark Santora, P.E., Inc., Civil Engineering, Civil and Environmental Engineering, one twenty-three Old Westboro Road, North Grafton, Mass., consisting of two sheets. The subject property is located along Wesleyan Street, westward of Grafton Street, and consistent holder in part of Shrewsbury assesses tax rate twenty-two, plot twenty-two, three thousand. A copy of the plans may be seen in the office of the Engineering Department, the Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., published in the Wisp Telegram, February fourteenth and February twenty-first, 2018.
Okay. Sir?
Yes, good evening. What we're doing here is proposing a duplex located on a B-two zoned lot. And it's approximately thirty, just shy of thirty thousand square feet, meets all the criteria for a duplex in the town of Shrewsbury. The, the lot is currently vacant, had a single family on it on a prior occasion. It's been demoed, there's an existing in-ground pool that's going to be demoed and construction of the, the new duplex on that site. The setbacks are going to be twenty-five to thirty percent greater than the requirements, somewhere in the vicinity of thirty-seven to forty, thirty-nine feet. The, it's fairly, you know, gentle sloping lot conducive to having decent drainage as far as we can sheet drain it and it, it won't be a, subject to high velocity slopes, et cetera. Proposing units with two car garages and, you know, standard duplex configuration.
Okay. Is that it?
I, what, what would, anything else you would like me to cover before we go into it, that's any questions?
No. Uh, no, uh, the only that Mr. Duhamel spoke with our senior civil engineer, Andy Truman, regarding one of the drain outlets, and I put it as a condition, just that the foundation and drain outlet, outlet location shall be reviewed in the field by the engineering department, probably Andy himself, prior to the backfilling of the foundation. He just had some concerns about the daylighting of it and the direction of it. So engineer has asked that that be put as a condition, which I, I put in the draft decision.
And I will add that we did move it since that initial concern.
Right.
He, he said if we moved it a little bit more towards the center of the lot, he would feel better about it. That has been done, it's on the current version of plan.
Okay.
Mr. Holland and Mr. Stone might also get the opportunity to review this plan with and.
Are there conservation concerns?
None. Brad, Mr. Stone reviewed it and he didn't, he said there was no issues, there's no wetlands, there's no areas of critical concern regarding wetlands or, or other. And the, the lot is sufficiently large to be well-drained, et cetera, the way it's proposed with the, with the grading.
Okay. Anyone on the board?
I just have one question. I was confused on if you were doing walkout basement or?
It is a walkout.
It is walkout.
It is a walkout. And the grading is consistent with the walkout, yes.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
Steve Blak?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Steve Arlenkis? Again, you know, this is a large lot for this area.
Thousand square feet.
Yeah, for this area, it's a large lot, but it's a large structure too.
But he's not asking for any waivers?
No, he's not asking for any waivers, it's site plan approval, approved with conditions.
It's still, even after, with all this, I mean, I think I had him look at the lot covered, I think I'm in the twelve percent grade or something.
I, I just, I'd like to hear some of the abutters' concerns.
So Duhamel, do you want to give the history of going to the ZBAA and asking for the two lots you had rejected?
I did do that approximately, just shy of two years ago, I, I took it to the ZBAA requesting an A&R subdivision of the, into two lots, one non-conforming lot. That was with the neighbors' support. And unfortunately, the hardship issue was, was the thing that stopped that. Although everyone agreed it, it actually probably made sense, it didn't meet the hardship requirements.
Okay. So he was asking originally for two lots with two smaller, single-family houses, which I actually agree with that request and by, you know, just by irony, they didn't meet the square footage of each lot, unfortunately, you know, because that would fit the old neighborhood style of housing. And the hardship was, there was no hardship really.
Every lot in that area is non-conforming.
So it's, um.
It, it was the neighbors' desire for, they were very supportive, they came with me to that meeting, everyone expressed, nobody had any issues other than I didn't have a hardship, you know, so.
That's, that's the standard.
That's, yeah.
That's the standard, that's fit, you know.
I just reserve right to make further comment, it's based on what the abutters.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Ma'am?
I'm Tati from forty-five Wesleyan Street, and glad to see a new improvement coming over that area, because I think people will be allowed to have a new home, maybe the duplex would be a better option for the affordable price. So glad to see a new development there.
Have you seen the size of the duplex? Okay.
Yeah, anyway, it's affordable for the people who want to buy a new house.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Ma'am?
Linda Camara, ten Woodland Street, and I was one that came to his meeting before and who really wanted the two homes as opposed to another duplex. Duplex doesn't fit the center of town. If you look at the colonial Shrewsbury, take a ride down the street and see what's happening. The lot needs to be used and I can understand if this is all that you're going to allow, that we're just going to have to go with this, unfortunately.
Not us.
It's not us.
Fine gentleman sitting next to you that, that's all they're going to allow, if I had to guess.
Well, change your mind. It is a huge lot and I'm sure that what he's designed, he's giving thirty-some odd feet on either side for each neighbor as looking at the plans and setting it back so that they'll have nice yards. But it's still, just doesn't seem like it fits with the neighborhood.
I agree with you, but that's what I saw in Bio-Lot, and.
Yeah.
He does have larger setbacks than most duplexes have too, much larger.
A nice lot.
Well, look at the duplex that's already there on the street. It's mammoth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the other thing, in, in terms of the design, we did try to keep it so that it, from the front, it would be.
Yeah, that one looks like it's built on a floodplain or something, it's like stepped up, yeah.
Yeah, this one here is, is more, you know, that the roof lines and things and that's pictures of the roof are a little more conducive to film like they fit.
My name's Rick Madden Guest, I'm fifteen Wesleyan, right next to him. I'm just here to say I would prefer a walkout from a drainage perspective.
And that is intense, so.
He's building a walkout.
Right, just want to go on record.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, should I close the hearing?
I'm hoping we close the public hearing on the eleven Wesleyan Street site plan approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to vote on it now or later?
I think we can do this one now.
Okay.
Final decision.
Do you want a copy for here?
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding An Application For Site Plan Approval, eleven Wesleyan Street, Fiber Homes, Inc., the applicant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next order of business, the next order of business is new business, which is nine thirty-five Main Street construction update. This is formerly nine forty-five Main Street. The assessor made an adjustment to the address, so forty-five is now the old, oh, yeah, is So 45 is now the old, oh yeah, is the old farmhouse, and the senior housing lot is now 935, just for anyone watching at home and trying to figure out what we're talking about. I can report to you that a few weeks back, the, and this is what I'm talking about tonight, the slope on the northwesterly side behind three of the duplexes on the plan began to, I guess you'd say, wash away somewhat. This was reported to us and noticed by Walter Castagna, our field engineer. The butter most affected by this is the Rosano family, they brought this immediately to our attention as well. They, the Rosanos, I should say, hired an engineer, Whitestone, that letter's before you tonight. Whitestone Engineering is a geotechnical engineer, I forget the name of the person right now, but who wrote the letter. However, they wrote an assessment of the situation and what they believe was a dangerous and collapsing slope with the potential for catastrophic failure. In turn, Mr. Venencasa, the owner of 935 Main Street and the builder of the project, got a soil engineer to Yankee Engineering to come out and run their own assessment and to propose a few solutions for the problem, which they did. That's the other letter you have before you tonight. This is ongoing, this has not been resolved. I know for a fact the two engineers of the butter and of Mr. Venencasa have been in touch with each other, but the conversation is ongoing and that they hope to come up with a solution that's mutually agreeable to both sides. Blasting at the site has stopped, the fire chief has not opted to renew the blasting permit because of concerns for the slope, the, what do you call it, the safety of the slope? If some of the blasting's quite close to the toe of it, his concern is that until the slope issue is resolved in a way that is satisfactory to, well, both engineers really, that he doesn't want to see blasting commence. Everything else, let's see, that's, that's pretty much it. The town is overseeing this. At the moment, our position is that we would like to see the two parties resolve this privately and then that the new slope plan, if you will, be folded into the modification that's before us at the moment. So the one for the garages, we would have an updated plan showing any new solution for the slope issue on that plan. So we would have it all in one as the modification. Like I said, this is ongoing, that was the last I heard. Our chief engineer, our town engineer has been out all week. I think it's the flu, I don't know, but he's been out all week, not well. So communications with him just haven't been existent right now, and I've not heard anything else. I know that the Rosanos are continuing to pursue other legal options and what they can. And we're doing what we can to make sure that this is resolved the best we can, so that's, that's kind of it. There's not too much else to say, I urge you to read that report, those two reports, and we're going to stay on top of it. If there is a role to play for the planning board, you guys will be the first to know. But at this point, engineering and planning and town management is following it pretty closely. Any questions for me from you? Okay. Very good. Moving to the... Steve, you want to come back in? Okay. So discuss old business, discuss potential 2018 special town meeting warrant articles. If any of you were watching Board of Selectmen Tuesday night, the Board of Selectmen agreed to have a special town meeting on April, I'm going to say 23rd, and I hope I'm right. 23rd, thank you Kathleen for remembering. To deal, or I should say take up, the marijuana issue, which I have put it on the drive and I've submitted to you tonight the draft language. There's going to be two articles, one to prohibit the recreational marijuana retail and other retail establishments outright, with some minor changes in use for registered marijuana dispensaries, which is the medical. And then the other one is to regulate. So the idea, my understanding at least, is that we'd have a vote on the prohibition. If that doesn't pass, then we would move the discussion about regulating. If neither of them pass, we still have the moratorium through November 18th. So we will take this up, I have to advertise, and before we can discuss this, we ask to be advertised as a legal notice in the telegram next week and so on. And we're going to take this up at our next hearing as an agenda item. That will be our one chance to have a public hearing before the April 23rd meeting. Okay, so we can talk about it more then, again, the language is there, I urge you to review it.
Does Town Council review this?
Oh, they've been with us the whole way, as I drafted the initial draft and that us and town management have been the three kind of branches have been working together. But it's still, that's what the public hearing's for in zoning review, is to add anything else or take away something. So I consider it a pretty refined document, but that's just speaking, highlighting myself. Pat myself on the back, I've done a good job. Uh, no, seriously, take a look and see what you think and come prepared, and I think we'll probably have a big turnout for that. The next one is town meeting articles, the zoning amendments, this is for the annual town meeting. We've received the letter, I forget the date, it was yesterday this morning, lost track of time. So our request to have those articles has been accepted, we've got the letter back, I'll be advertising for them. That one will have two chances at it, it'll have April 5th and the May meeting. It is a lot to go through, so please go through it. If you have individual questions, feel free to reach out to me individually, we can talk about it. It is a lot, so I'm not going to go through it all again tonight, because we're going to have plenty of time next meeting to go through it. Other than that, we have the two letters of no appeal for 19 Floral Street and 620 Hartford Turnpike. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think we need to discuss...
I just want to say Bernie, I thought you did a great job Tuesday.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I told him the same thing.
There's a lot more to go, but...
They gave him a tough time.
It was a good way to, yeah. But I'm confident we'll get there.
Hiding yourself up.
That's right, lots of practice.
Okay.
Wood Street and Harrington.
How about Wood Street first? Harrington is the same thing.
Yeah.
But we have to vote the two of them differently, right? Not differently, but separately.
Yeah, I think Steve's suggestion is, makes the most sense.
Which was?
Deliberate Wood Street first.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve?
So I guess that our discussion, this is by recollection of what the conditions of approval would be. Yes, that we, first, this applicant has agreed to undertake a lot.
Yeah.
I'm not sure he knows what he's getting into, but he was here and he agreed to it, so... I guess the condo association for the duplexes is going to agree to maintain Wood Street for as long as it remains a private way?
That's my understanding, that the deed's going to state that, yes.
Should be a condition of our decision.
Did I not put it in?
I'm not sure. So, it's about this, that's just a...
Is it?
Yeah, number seven?
Seven.
Wood Street shall remain a private way and all service maintenance?
It just says of the property owners.
Says of the property, and then... Yes. What's this, property owners, does that imply?
We can just change, I can change that.
You know, for this decision?
Yeah, what number did you say?
Seven.
Number seven, page five. You got the right version, yeah.
I actually have a slightly different version than you. What does it start with?
Wood Street.
Wood Street.
Oh, okay, yeah, see, I have it as number three. Okay, yeah, other than plug each other's possibly, uh, okay, so I can change that to, right.
It's all right, I go from, from number one to number eight. I don't have a number three.
Yeah, you're looking at...
Yeah, number seven. Why don't we, "Shall remain a private way and all service and maintenance other than public utilities shall be with the responsibility of the Harrington Avenue Realty Trust or its successors." He agreed to it.
Yeah, I think he's agreed to it in writing elsewhere as well, so...
Right, and he's agreed to improve Wood Street to the fence, the existing fence. I don't know what location that is, but...
I don't know if that's actually on a plan.
The fence is not...
No, I never see it.
I didn't see it either.
No, what's that, that fence?
Fence. It's not like we have a station.
Oh, it's on the, it's on there.
I don't remember seeing it.
It's always on the plan.
It's, it's, it's not, it doesn't go...
I see it.
It doesn't show on the cross street.
It doesn't show all the way across because he has a different notice over it.
I see it.
It's got, but yeah, he agreed to know that the fence...
We'll write to the existing fence.
Cape Cod Avenue, 26 feet wide.
I'm actually okay with the 26 feet, I think not being able to, I'm not so convinced that Mr. Sherpley's actually going to approve his section of the road. So I think they'll be able to plow snow there for the, for seen future, but if they do, I think they are going to need the extra space to put snow. So I don't, I'm not so against 26 feet, although it is wide.
But we called them on it.
So I'm not so against that for that reason, I don't think for any other reason that they needed 26-foot wide private road. But if he's willing to do... In my opinion, if he's willing to do it and it makes the neighbors happy, then... Why, so be it.
I'd rather do 24.
I'd rather do 24, yeah.
Ultimately, it's up to the board, I mean, minimally, you don't have to grant anything past the 22 feet because that meets the minimum requirements. They're not asking for a waiver for this.
How big is the existing right of way?
The right of way's 40 feet, the pavement currently is 18.
Yeah, private 40 feet wide.
The applicant's asking for 22, which is the minimum requirement, no waiver. Even if, even if, say theoretically, Sherpley or his successors improve Wood Street the rest of the way, it's still not a cut-through street, so it's still 22 feet as our minimum standard. I professionally and personally think 26 feet is excessive. I understand his point, but there are plenty of private roads in town that are...
Who's, who's point?
Mr. Montanari's point.
24.
I just don't see the argument doing 26.
I think you and I are in the majority.
I think it's in your discretion, so I'm not going to get in the way, but it is...
Okay.
24 feet.
I'm 26.
I'm 26.
I'm 24.
I'm 24.
Tiebreaker Steve.
Tiebreaker Steve.
That's what they call him.
For this particular situation, I think to satisfy everyone in the area, I would, I would lean on the 26. I think it's a wide street, but...
Well, you can have a split vote on it, I mean, so it can be, well, actually, no, we're just making a condition, so that's fine, or don't listen to me, it's not, I forgot, it's not a waiver.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's foolish still, but...
If it makes everybody happy, what's, what's the harm?
Yeah, I...
You know, it's just, it's just more impervious, you know, it's, it's a road that's much wider than it needs to be.
I think Mr. Montanari, they...
We could cite the master plan. Master plan does make mention at points of decreasing impervious surfaces and improving stormwater in town. But that wasn't a vote, that was a discussion.
Steve Kissel changes mine.
Yeah, that was a discussion, that was a discussion, yeah.
Kathleen wants to vote.
The reason why, the reason why, you know, he wanted the 26 was to turn his truck around. Now, tell me, how much do you need to turn a truck around, you know?
Well, no, he said it was more 26 for the snow.
For the snow.
Oh, okay.
He, he said, he even said, "I don't need 26 to turn my truck around, but 26 for the snow." That's why you showed the picture.
I don't think cars are going to be parking them down.
Yeah, it's not going to be parked.
No, I don't think so.
I did, that's not even in the realm of possibility for my kids, my decision of 26, I just think for the snow, if they can't push it to the end, to have a wide street, to have it come off the sides would be better. That's just my opinion.
I have no strong opinion.
Yeah, I'm not that strong about it, that's what I think.
If you want 26, I'll go 26.
Like I said, I think it is probably wider than it needs to be, but if it settles down some of the angst in the neighborhood, I'm fine with it.
It is very close quarters over there.
Yeah. Okay. So 26 feet?
So we'll take it to a vote?
We just did.
We just did.
We don't have to formulate that vote.
I don't think so, because it's, it's not a waiver, it's a condition.
Yeah.
So just to run through, just to make sure we're, recap. So I have the additional soil testing, that's one I put in. Cape Cod curbing shall be provided on both sides of Wood Street. The paved road width of Wood Street shall be 26 feet. Wood Street shall remain a private way and all service and maintenance other than public utilities shall be the responsibility of the Harrison Ave Realty Trust or its successors, I'll spell that avenue.
Harrington Avenue, yeah.
Har, I say Harrison, sorry, what's wrong with me? Harrington Ave, I knew that.
Speed bump?
Well, I think...
If you need it.
Oh, the limit of the road.
You don't need it because it's paved into the fence, right?
Right, but the limit of the road is to the fence, that's the other condition.
You want to put a speed bump at the end though, because it's going to catch the water.
Yes, it's going to act as a sway, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the...
As a dam.
So Wood Street shall extend to, right, shall extend or terminate at?
Right.
Extend to, I'll figure it out, or terminate.
At the fence.
This is going to be like the planner's case study on what not to do.
And I think he's right.
I'm neither disagreeing or... Don't put me in jeopardy, Steve, don't put me in jeopardy.
I, I didn't, I, I'm ashamed to say, I didn't realize that the, until tonight, that the curb was going to go...
I didn't either, I agree.
Across the road, you know, and then...
It doesn't make any sense.
When he started talking about it, I'm looking at the map, you know, and I'm like, what?
I hadn't catched that originally, it makes sense in terms of catching the water.
Right, yeah.
Forcing it to...
But I think, I agree with you, if you have some sort of speed bump there, it'll still catch water, but again, if he's plowing and he pushes it over it, it's not going to wreck the carton.
What's the over-under on John proving the rest of Wood Street?
That's why I said, I'm not so convinced that it's going to happen.
At, I'm going to be really fancy, at its terminus, how about that? Wood Street shall be extended to the existing fence with a speed bump at its terminus.
Okay.
Just because I get to use the word terminus. Yeah, I would just make a note that there's been giant boulders and a fence blocking access for everyone, both ways, for a very long time.
It's probably the first time we've been talked.
But, I suppose the town doesn't want to create...
The only other optional thing that was brought up was the sightline easement, should we include that into the...
That was a Graves' suggestion, I'm happy whatever the board wants on that.
Yeah.
Who's going to maintain it?
Can't be on Montanari's.
It would be, to me, actually, I'd see it more as like in the deed for the...
Association?
For the association, that they can't block the...
So they can't extend their fence out, or put a tree or a brick wall in front of that sightline.
Let me know, brick walls.
I know, but you know what I'm saying. It's, I, the board can, I mean, I'm happy, I see, I see Graves' point, I'll just put it that way. I mean, you don't want to restrict it at any point, but at the same time, it does come to an enforcement issue.
If you put it in the, if you haven't put it in the deed or the association, as a condition.
You can put the housing association...
Don't make it so difficult that we have to police it.
To say...
Okay.
Applicant shall not impair the sightline.
Sightline.
The existing sightline along Harrington Avenue.
You can even just do it as a condition that way.
Yeah.
The applicant...
Now we're in the future.
Or it's, so the applicant or its successors...
Do the science, yeah.
That's a good, yeah, good compromise.
Yeah, yeah.
Shall not.
All this stuff, you know, how do we enforce it?
That's the whole thing, it's an enforcement thing.
No, no, I like, I like what Steve said.
You'd be surprised, I get calls about all sorts of buffers and things from 20 years ago, and I'm looking through deeds and the registry of deeds to find it, and then...
In 10 years, these people are all going to get together and stand out in front of Whole Foods and get people to sign, you know, petition for a warrant article for the acceptance of Wood Street.
26 feet. All right, so not keep the sightline.
How wide is Harrington Ave?
Not as wide as this.
I think it's two rods.
You bring up an excellent point, Kathleen, I'll give you that.
I think it's a two-rod rod.
You might want to rethink that decision.
It's as old as me. No, it's older than me.
Really?
Harrington Ave?
Way older.
Way older than you.
Way older than you.
But it has... But it has a varying width.
Okay, so there are waivers. They would, most of them are, do you want to run through them real quick or do you want, have you looked through them already? One of them's for the scale. I'll just run through it quickly. To allow the scale.
Thirty.
Horizontal scale of what, uh. Sorry. Provide a street profile on a horizontal scale of one to twenty, one to two instead of one to forty and one to four. The next one is to not display outstanding individual trees within fifty feet of the right of way. The next one to, to provide an existing curb radius of five feet instead of thirty feet. That's an existing condition. Current wide of ways, the next one's for the forty-feet right of way. Again, that's how the road was laid out a hundred years ago. Oh, and the next one's, again, deals with the right of way. The one after that's the cross slope with no crown instead of a five-inch crown. To not provide a turnaround, which is like a circle at the end. There's no room within the right of way, and you're not going to want to do that in this one.
It's going to be a through the street after.
It's going to be a through street. Right. Well, at twenty-six feet, you would have, you might as well just do a turnaround. Five-foot wide sidewalk on both sides. The selco easement, they did put the selco easement on the one side, obviously the Montanari side, they don't have control over it even if they wanted to. Two driveway openings instead of one, they are the duplexes. And then finally, to not provide vertical granite curbing, and that's fine because that's been taken care of in the condition.
Yeah.
Those can, if you agree, can all be accepted. The one that you're, will definitely have to waive is the, to not provide granite monuments at street intersections because that has now been provided, so you can just go ahead and deny that one. They didn't withdraw the waivers. We just have to deny it.
Let's deny the granite.
So you can vote to approve.
I move that we approve the decision of the planning board regarding Wood Street definitive subdivision with the modifications we just made. And just, Bernie just went over, including that relative to the width of pavement, Cape Cod berm, the point of terminus of the, the improved section of Wood Street and.
Maintenance.
And the maintenance by the applicant and its successors.
And the sightline.
In retention of a sightline easement.
Or not, yeah, not easement.
In favor of the town, not to be impaired by the applicant or its successors. And I, and whether we deny the waiver relative to granite monuments.
And approve the remaining.
And approve the remaining decision as written with the modifications I just read. I just read into the record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kathleen, I will.
See you later.
Wrap this up and I'll let you know when the conditions are ready.
You want to send that out to everybody?
Oh, yes, for you.
Yeah, I can send it to.
Harrington, now we need to do.
That must have happened.
Oh, yes, the Harrington, of course. Yep, very good remembering.
That's why he's the young guy gets read.
So, yeah. I think we just.
Kind of young.
Just want to double-check these conditions now, not in conflict.
There's a second here, just.
By a few days. You guys are close in age, aren't you?
You don't get it, I am. No, I'm June.
Okay, so I have a couple of changes here to make. Number two, so I'll make sure this reflects the other one, responsibility of. I'll just put C subdivision. Number three is the sewer lateral needs to be changed to six-inch diameter. That was one of the engineering cut. I was thinking. Well. I don't think we need to add as a condition. I was going to say final plans, but final plans have to be approved by me, engineering, and everyone else anyway. So I, when those final plans come in, I suspect they're going to reflect the subdivision because that's what was approved, so it kind of has to. So I'm not too concerned about that one. So I think focus on the conditions and the plan will be updated, and if it's not, I'll make them go back, and we won't do a reconstruction until they're ready.
Can we put something in here that, because it was kind of moving, it was a very fluid situation? In the extent that there's an inconsistency between the decision on the definitive subdivision and the decision on the site plan application, the decision on the subdivision controls.
Yeah, so we could put, shall abide by all conditions within the subdivision decision. I can cite the decision.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how I do another ones when there's like a com con.
I just, I think there's going to be, I just.
Yeah.
It's moving too fast.
Yep, so I will make sure there's a condition that cites the subdivision decision. And that they have to abide by all conditions within it and so on. Yep, we do that with other ones all the time.
I think that's it, right?
We got to vote on it.
We have to vote on it, right?
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision of the planning board regarding application for site plan approval, sixty-nine dash seventy-three Harrington Avenue, the applicant, the Harrington Avenue Realty Trust, with those condition, additional conditions that we just discussed, having Bernie incorporate them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to close for adjourn?
Move to adjourn this evening's public hearings.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.